All right, we call this meeting of the Fire Commission to order.
As pledge leaders and flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on tonight's agenda, we have consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes from January except like the way they need to be amended. And the speaker, Mr. Blue Deal.
So under the review of fire study, okay. Consensus of the commission that the top priority is to acquire two ladder trucks on Prince department discussing the suit. But under my, I made a motion that two ladder trucks be sent to the approval, be sent to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance for their approval to purchase the two ladder trucks for both departments now. Then you also made a motion regarding the study two that was second and that's.
Yes, it's not either. I didn't, until now, I didn't know it wasn't it.
That's not.
Right, you made, you made a motion to, for them to come up with a, a, a forward plan.
Forward looking plan, uh, vehicle replacement.
Correct. And the rest of the study.
Yep.
If we could amend the minutes. Right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, second item on our agenda is consideration of the Stony Hill twenty-four, twenty-five budget presentation. We'll let the Chief Baker present it and then we'll grill him with questions and answers.
Okay, um, the budget has a.
Everybody's got a copy, right?
Everybody have the copies that I gave.
Yes.
At the meeting. So the proposed budget does have a, um, an increase and the majority of the increase is due to, um, cost increase. The the two oh two account was, uh, due to a major price increase in turnout here, uh, and minor increases across the board. The firehouse maintenance account, uh, went up significantly due to the fact that we are, um, now adding in the cost of firehouse software, um, and the cost of the, um, door access to the firehouse, which we were kind of just absorbing as just part of a general, uh, fund. And we are going to be saving some money. We're going to be canceling the cable now that we're on the fiber optic network. Um, to speak on that, we actually had cable out today to, to make some repairs. But, um, IT came out and said, we really can't switch yet until the, um, fiber optic can be brought a direct line to each TV instead of trying to stream the wirelessly. Or you're just gonna have problems with a video buffering and buffering and not and, and, uh, freezing off and thawing, so it needs to really have a, a direct line. So we're gonna hold on to the Comcast probably another month. I told them, you know, the, where the incentive is, the sooner you get this small wiring project done, the sooner we can, um, cut this cost out of the budget. Um, and the rest is just, um, vendor costs is increasing, um, dues and education, we increased significantly for, um, training because not only costs are going up, but we're doing a lot more specialized training. We did it, we just recently did a class on, um, cold water rescue that we had a state certified instructor come down, um, deep sack class. We've done a, um, low angle rope rescue class. These are things that, uh, really need to be taught by, uh, special instructors instead of just in-house. We can do some refreshers, but to actually get that point across from the start really needs to be done by, uh, a certified instructor in that, uh, field. And professional services, uh, uh, just cost increases.
You're underspent year to date, your, your light.
The, yeah, well, it, it looks, it looks deceiving because we have a lot of costs that are gonna be coming up in the, uh, the springtime, which is gonna be each apparatus going out for its, uh, service maintenance inspection. Um, we just had our, uh, Hurstful's just inspected today, so there's still a lot of high-ticket items that we're waiting for the, for it to, to come in. We have some, uh, gear that's been purchased that has to, uh, to come in, so, um, it, it looks like there's a lot of money left, but we're only halfway through the year. And one of the things that I found was, uh, one of the vendors was holding off on some of the, uh, invoices. Uh, one is the, uh, timeframe of items coming in, like we had ordered a, uh, battery powered fan, took a while to come in, and then they thought they sent the bill, they didn't send the bill, so now I have a bill that technically should have been on last year's budget. The budget's closed out, but now I've got it absorbed in this year's budget. But that was, um, their fault.
And in general, where do you guys stand on two sets of gear for everybody? Close?
We're, we're close to it, yeah. I mean, we just had an influx of some new members coming in, so that's not gonna be the case. Obviously, we want to make sure that, uh, they're committed before we start pushing for two sets a year. We're not gonna get them two sets a year right off the.
Now, when Doug says two sets of gear for everybody, are you getting two sets of gear for everybody or two sets of gear for your interior firefighters?
No, interior firefighters, because the, um, that second set of gear for, um, exterior firefighters, it, first of all, it's not getting, uh, pretty much any contamination to it, so it shouldn't be difficult to put back in service quickly.
Your ladder is tested?
Ladders have nothing tested.
That's the same price though.
Oh, I have a couple of questions. Under dues and education, what's money allocated to Georgetown Volunteer Fire Company?
Those were a class.
That's a class.
Due to education training.
Yeah, two classes.
That was for the instructors for, for, um, uh, Nick the Meter.
Oh, that's where they held it.
That's where they held it.
They held it, okay.
And the, the host is doing the effect.
And Brookfield Volunteer Fire Company too, that's a class?
Those are classes. They actually, that was for, um, classes for EMS. No, I know, I'm sorry, that's not EMS, that's, that's Fire One, Fire One class, Fire One class, yeah. Tommy is in there.
That's fair too, because you share that with Chris. Right, when you guys, or you pay, you pay pursuit.
They pay for students, so whoever, the member is actually taking the class, right, it would be, um, but there is some, uh, funding that's gonna go in there that's gonna be shared for the, uh, Belt of Fire Department hosting the class. So for instance, there's, um, cost for the, uh, fire school for the live burn, the two departments are gonna, um, split that cost because they're the hosts. But, uh, Tom Gallagher is taking a fire service instructor two class, so that's where the Brookfield money.
Is, uh, the Barnelli, are those tires?
Yes, um, it also could be for the, the cheese truck. We had, uh, quite a bit of, uh, work done in that with getting tires, getting brakes, getting, uh, shocks, a battery. The expedition also gets worked on there as well.
Where's your new ride?
It's a good question. I don't think that, that.
Yeah, so what's happening with the, the cheese truck?
We've sent it on to the Board of Selectmen.
That was last year. It was endorsed by the Fire Commission last year.
Yeah, we sent it to the Board of Selectmen and it went to the Board of Finance and they sent it back and, or it, it, it got, it got held. It was in, in between the election. I think you made a motion or something to, uh, put it on hold until after the election. And, and then it came back to us and we forwarded it to the Board of Selectmen again. I haven't heard anything since.
That's fallen through the cracks. We should make a motion to move that back through again.
I mean, I put it into the capital again, you'd have a.
Saw the ten years.
Yeah. We can't really add it to our agenda tonight for discussion, but we'll certainly bring it up at our February meeting if it hasn't transpired yet.
But you might be able to, because we're doing a budget discussion.
Yeah, it's a, it's a capital budget.
Well.
Cause that's what I gave you.
Yeah, output of the.
Either approve or disapprove.
I gave you a copy of the, uh, capital because that was gonna be, I was. So that's when, uh, I talked to, uh, Selectman Carter, who said regardless, just submitted because, um, Brad asked for it.
I'm sure I haven't got.
Here.
I'm going to the backstage.
There.
Last thing.
Now I have a cow back. So we.
Now it's the second year.
All right, well, yeah, so I mean, we'll just, we'll just recommend that to the Board of Selectmen again. We want it to work.
And if you're just looking at that capital budget, the amount that's in there for the, um, the Paratex trucks, that's including the twelve thousand that I had approved by this commission the last time we met. So if that starter kit gets approved, that amount would probably be deducted from that total.
Right. All right, so we wanna make a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to move forward with the capital replacement of this thing, you know, chief vehicle?
Yes.
Yes. Second.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Third time, so hopefully something happens with it, John.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for? I haven't had much.
Go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna jump around here a little bit.
Okay.
But I'll start with your, uh, two oh eight vehicle maintenance. You had, uh, I believe a thousand dollars for weight analysis, annual weight analysis. You actually doing that?
Yes, um, we talked to, um.
I haven't seen it yet, so I assume that's something you're doing later in the spring or?
Yes, that comes up, where we do send the entire fleet in one by one for the, um, annual inspections and, uh, maintenance and testing of that.
Who does that?
He does.
All right, and then, um, I saw in your year-to-date on the, on the vehicle maintenance, you had a couple of expenditures for gallons a night for, um, you think total, yeah. One for thirty-two fifty-five and another for twenty-seven sixty-eight. Wha- what were those?
Uh, we had them out for some several minor repairs. We had the rescue, uh, because of a, uh, a brake leak. They're releasing a brake ceremony.
Okay, so those weren't your, your.
No, those are actual, um, repair, repair issues.
Okay.
Outside of maintenance and inspections.
None.
We just had them out for a, uh, electrical issue on engine one for a power switch that had to be, uh, replaced.
And then I saw, it, it looks like you had your ladder testing done. It looked like four hundred dollars, but you're requesting seven fifty in the budget.
Correct, that's gonna be for a, uh, an increase in cost. We had them done, so when, um.
Seems like a pretty dramatic increase.
Um, plus that we didn't have all, we were anticipating additional laps with, uh, the new apparatus. Um, the, um, but we're not gonna get the.
Yeah, I don't proceed to apparatus.
Yeah.
Next fiscal year.
But, um.
So I, I, I would think we could hold that, you know, with a nominal price increase, maybe hold that line at four fifty as opposed to seven hundred.
Yeah.
So we, we get a motion to hold the, uh, the line item in the, in the.
What's the line?
In the two oh eight account, who has, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars for ladder testing, we're gonna hold that at four fifty.
The, the ladders have changed. Just keep it the ladders.
Well, we're increasing it from four hundred to four fifty, anticipating a modest increase. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. All those. Do you wanna do, all right, is it, is there any more in that line that you wanna do for bottom line number?
Well, there might be.
Okay, okay. Just when we get down, we should do the bottom line on that.
Uh, yeah. Hurstful's service and repairs, so you got a little bit of an increase there, twelve fifty from eleven hundred. And we replaced a whole bunch of these tools with, you know, new hydraulics and, you know, we said we weren't gonna be doing any more repairs on any of the old, uh, you know, hydraulics.
That was the, the cost of the actual, uh, inspection and. So now we actually have more tools that are being inspected than, cause we kept in service the hydraulic tools. And now we have the.
So this is the cost of your, your annual service contract, but we're not doing any more repairs on the, on the old.
If they break.
Huh?
If they break, we're gonna try and get parts. If we can't get parts, then, um.
I, I thought we, I thought we agreed that we weren't gonna spend any more money on that. I believe.
That we got, what, what, what we're talking about, we got.
The hydraulic tools.
The, the hydraulic line tools, there's a couple that aren't that old. I, I feel that we should keep putting money into them if they have parts to, to replace instead of jumping and buying a new set of.
It would certainly be cheaper than buying e-drawers.
If they have, it, but the issue is, and I spoke with the guy at, uh, Hurst tonight, they, they're not making replacement parts. They're not making the blades for the old hydraulic ones. They're not making the tips. So something like that breaks and he can't get it, his recommenda- recommendation is to replace it with an e-draw. But if he has a O-ring or something that can fix that tool, we're gonna spend the money and, and fix that tool versus spending.
No, no, I, yeah, I mean, I understand, O-rings and stuff.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying something ma- if something major breaks on it, you break a tip or, or, or something on the cutter, it scarves it, so we, we have to replace it then with a new tool, but until then, we can keep service in them and keep, keep going through them.
Okay, yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure we were, eh, as long as I understand that that's the cost of getting a service.
I was just actually gonna lo- look and see if he gave you, because he was there today, I probably have the exact amount of what it costs for him to do the service tonight.
Okay.
Someone jumps off the truck, they're pulling an e-draw anyway.
Yeah.
So it's getting limited, it's getting limited use. You could probably milk this for quite a while, it's just. Run them over again.
Most of the time, it's just getting its, uh, weekly check to make sure that it is in, in working order. So, yes, it will have the, uh, the pump run, it will have hydraulics run through it, it will, you know, I mean, that's actually gonna help, uh, sustain its life to make sure it's, uh, getting, you know, lubricated.
It's always been the same company they have.
Yeah, I don't, Fire Magic always does.
Yeah.
It's the same one that's.
Yeah, yeah. Let's just wait for Doug to see if he's got that number, what it costs to share.
But this, the only thing this is, is the breakdown of what they do with each tool. It's not, it's not giving you.
I, I mean, it was, it was a nominal increase off, from last year. I mean, I, my big concern is, is this is a twenty-nine percent increase over the, over a two-year period. This, this commission, you know, allocated a lot of extra money above what you requested la- in last year's budget. We gave you, you know, like extra money for, uh, meters and, uh, thermal cameras.
Yeah, that was a one-time purchase for, uh, uh.
But over the course of the pre- last two years, you have a twenty-nine percent increase in, in spending, you know, for most time, so. Seems like a lot of money to me, but. All right, so moving on from vehicle, the vehicle maintenance is just a, before it begins, we have a lot of testing.
So, then, what else do you wanna do to the bottom line now? To change the, the total for account to, uh, five two oh eight?
Sure.
Fifty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty. Is that right?
Yeah, all right, so a motion to fund the, the two oh eight account to fifty-three thousand, two fifty. Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? So carry. All right, uh, dues and education. I just, I have a question on, you get three thousand dollars for recruitment and, and retention. How are you spending that money? I mean, I'm all about, you know, recruiting new members and retaining them. I'm just curious on how you're spending the money.
Um, so it's being spent on, um, apparel, T-shirts, um, station shirts for the officers. Um, it's being spent on a, uh, gift at the holidays. Um, it's being spent on, uh, recruitment flyers. It's being spent on, spent it on, um, the, we're also incorporating some of that cost of the, um, what, the, the message board that we're doing.
Right.
Because that's gonna be an annual recurring cost.
All right, we, you said shirts and, and apparel, but I see in your two oh two account, you have a line item for uniforms and station wear. Wouldn't that be the same thing?
Well, the, the Class A uniforms are, are, are separated out.
It says, and, and, and station wear, you're two of them.
Yeah, that's mostly coming out of, uh, the retention and recruitment, um. We have some of the, uh, the signs that we need to replace that we put up throughout the town, um, so that was gonna come out of there. We also take out of there some of the social media costs of the, um, recruitment videos that we put on social media, so we have an outside company come in and, and put together a video. So the, uh, the cost of, um, editing and, um, sound and. That was, uh, Jake Barry's brother that did it for us the last time.
What am I getting what from that paper? Let's switch on again. It's the same paper, it's just orientated differently. All right, so that was dues, dues and education. All right, so just a motion to fund the dues and education. Hmm, the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars as requested?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. I'm really jumping around here, huh? Uh, three oh six, professional services. Uh, my question on that was, looks like you're requesting, uh, eight, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars for the, uh, EAP. Which is, and it looks like the actual cost of that in this year's budget was one thousand, six dollars and eleven cents. It's a pretty significant increase.
Uh, that was for the projected increase for the cost.
That's almost double. And your, and your year-to-date was one thousand, six dollars and change.
I would have to check back with them on exact increase in cost. I don't have a quote for them.
Yeah. This is what, this is what I claimed this year.
Yeah.
And, uh, Chief McCollum has it in his budget for fifteen hundred. He's got quite a few more members. I don't know how they charge it, if it's by members or.
I don't, I think it's about, I mean, I don't think it's that number.
I just, I, Chief McCollum gave me a copy of his proposal today, and he's got fifteen hundred in his.
Okay, then we could probably reduce that to the fifty.
What do you wanna do? Put it in as fifteen hundred dollars?
So can we have a motion to reduce the, uh, three oh six account by, um, nineteen five, uh, uh, forty-five hundred dollars? I'm sorry, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Thirty-five hundred, no.
No, forty-five, cause he's proposing nineteen fifty. He had eighteen, eighteen five in there last year. He's proposing nineteen five.
So some of that's also gonna be the, uh, participants.
That's a different line. Oh, no, wait, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm. Seventeen fifty, eighteen fifty.
Yeah, so the only thing that should be changing would be the, uh, EAP.
Right, so we wanna reduce that by three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, so three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Thirty-five dollars.
You're paying us back. You gotta bring money.
All right, so we'll make a motion to fund the three oh six account in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Oh, firehouse maintenance. Raj door maintenance requesting twelve hundred dollars. I, I just, I look back in your, your year-to-date and so far, I see overhead door, you've only spent two hundred and seventy dollars, you have anticipated.
We've had a lot of repairs over, over, uh, last year, and they need to even come back again.
I saw two hundred and seventy dollars. That seemed like a lot.
There's so many times that they come and they don't build. We don't, we don't reach even bill. For some guy, I don't know, it's because of Raj.
We've had a lot more work than two hundred and fifty dollars. I've had it on the free course on the minimum.
But there is an opener, the opener on A three is Raj's door, the other half to be replaced, and that's where the cost increase is gonna be.
There's a gap in, in quite a few of the doors, which is causing, you know, obviously, uh, temperature, but we're, we also have a road problem that they've gotta get this, these gap fixed. Um, there's also because of low bid, some of the, um, the tracks need to be looked at. A three gets, you know, used several times a day. That's probably one that's really becoming an issue. I would say probably eighty-five, ninety percent of the time that they come out just for that one thing, just because it gets so much use.
Yeah, and ninety percent of the time, honestly, because these guys don't charge us. They go out, they fix it. And they're.
Yeah, are they not charging us, or are they billing, is building maintenance getting billed for it or?
Just wanna ask, John, do, do you get the bills or do they go to finance or?
If I don't get a bill, I don't know about it. I, I don't, I don't know how to answer that question because.
Well, I, I don't know. I can't imagine somebody's coming out and doing work and not getting paid for it.
Yeah, so, no, maybe we need to check with finance to see if, you know, they're paying the bills and not allocating for the firehouse.
That's over. Well, I just don't understand why I would get some and not all of them. If they were, if they truly were billing.
Yeah, that's true. Who do you use?
Brookfield did. We use Brookfield overhead door.
All right, so then, I know, the other question I had is, I know, it gets a little confusing. You had, you know, you, you said you were taking out the cost of the cable service, I understand that, and then you're talking about adding in message boards, but then you just said you.
We're also gonna have to put in, um, uh, streaming apps too, to offset not having any cable TVs.
Right, but you just told me that you were funding your message boards through your dues and education in the, in your fire prevention or your recruitment and retention. By.
Right, because some of that is, is going to be coming from, uh, this account for, because we're getting three different message boards. I was breaking out the one that was gonna be in the community room, because that's gonna be more community based. The others are gonna be more, uh, firehouse based. And because the one in the, uh, uh, community room, we're gonna look at more of putting on community events and also trying to get some recruitment and, um, more members out of it based on, um, advertising that we need members and, and showing, uh, photo gallery of what we do for any time that the community group is used.
And then the management of the software and the incident alerting system, if you just, just explain that, what it is. And then the management of the software and the incident alerting system, if you just just explain that, what it is. Four forty five hundred dollars, forty five hundred dollars for annual cost of firehouse managing software and incident alerting system.
So the uh firehouse software is um. We're using it right now, but I never put it in as a line item, which is emergency reporting, which is about two thousand dollars a year. I can't give you exact numbers, Tommy's working on it right now, looking at possibly changing to a new company, because the. Uh software that is being used right now is not compatible between the two departments for his work as a fire marshal. Uh this new company first do says that they can work with the two different uh uh FID numbers. FDID numbers, also um they have their own alerting system, which would be an increase in cost. But then we would be able to lose the cost of the um active number one, which is currently coming out of the fire marshal.
Anybody else have any other questions on those accounts?
Sure. The uh chairman, it's it's Tom, I I can, if you want me to explain that a little bit.
Well, go ahead, yeah, I mean, I think I kinda have a hand up handle on it now.
Yeah, so right now, like you said, right, um each firehouse is paying for. Emergency reporting, which is their software for the fire incident reports, for training records, right? You know, inventory, truck checks, all that, each firehouse is paying for that separately, and then. I pay for emergency management for active nine one one, which is the mobile alerting app. And then I have my own software through the fire marshals for fire marshal inspections and preplans, so. Emergency reporting was bought out by ESO, their new price schedule goes into effect later on this year. And it's probably each firehouse is probably gonna pay double or triple what they're paying now, so there's another company out there. Uh first do that New Milford, the city of Danbury, and Brookfield are currently using. Um and I've demoed it and looked at it, and it pretty much takes everything, it takes a a mobile re- uh incident reporting app. The fire incident reporting, my preplanning, my fire marshals inspections, and all their training records, everything in the one software program. Where everyone will have, you know, their level of access, um and it'll help me to update preplans pretty much instantaneously. So we basically took the cost of that entire system and and split it three ways between each firehouse and and the fire marshal's office, so it's. That's that's kind of what we would like to do, so we can kinda get rid of some things and kinda streamline stuff, and I I, you know, for the. Preplanning part of it, it'll be able to be pretty much instantaneous preplans, and right now I have to. Do in a software program, print out a PDF, and then go into another app and upload it, it's just very cumbersome and nothing gets updated on a very timely basis, so. It'll streamline a lot of a lot of software programs.
Okay, yeah, no, I just questioned it because I see Chief McCollum had put in for two thousand dollars for that, and then Chief Baker has forty five hundred dollars for it.
Yeah, no, I think I gave him all the same price.
That's that's because I'm adding in additional uh because our our door system, I didn't break it out, but. Our door system also costs us about two thousand dollars for the uh the firewall and managing incident system. Which we use a company called Open Bad.
Alright.
Thank you, Tom.
So that was fire, so did we have a motion to fund the two oh seven account as as proposed? Alright, so a motion to fund the two oh seven account in the amount of two twenty four thousand two hundred dollars. All those in favor? So carry, are opposed, um so carry. Alright, uh two oh two, equipment and supply, equipment and supplies. Pretty big jump.
Most of that is for the cost of turnout here drastically increased, goes up multiple times a year um with the uh. Cancer barrier, probably one of the big um reasons that they're causing, and just because the material is. It's increasing. And I did, I actually under budgeted last year, so that's why it sounds even higher of an increase.
And so I guess my big my big question is is, I thought last year we we uh we funded. Money for the purchase of a couple new gas meters. We I would think that you should be kinda up to date on gas meters, or you're looking for.
Well, now it's mostly uh repairs.
Well, you're looking for fifteen hundred dollars for new meters and another uh seventeen hundred for repairs. That's thirty two hundred dollars allocated to just gas meters.
But needing uh a couple of officers need new uh CO meters that they're um. Causing uh more trouble than it's worth to repair, the um the cost of. Replacing the uh the reason the cost is going up and the calibration gas is going up, and also the replacement of the sensors.
And how much are those those personal CO meters that you're upstairs carrying, when they're not, they're not a ton of them, correct? Yeah, that's what you're talking about, the the little personal CO meter that.
Right, yeah, those are.
We need some line officer will have a meter, little personal meter. But there's sensors inside there that go bad, they have to be changed, and sometimes the sensor's more than the meter for.
Yeah, I was always under the impression that those were like, well, once they go, once they're.
Yeah, when they're, you have the single CO meter, and then you also have the um for gas meter. But yeah, to replace your cartridge on the for gas meter is definitely worth it, but not necessarily on the on the CO.
So basically, alright, so you have a so you have a line item for fifteen hundred dollars for new meters. So I guess you're telling me you need five of the personal CO meters?
I don't think I need five.
And there's is there is there room to reduce that amount? You know, you got seventeen hundred dollars for repairs, and I understand that's for replacing. Sensors in your four or five gas meters and the calibration glass, but.
Yeah, I mean, we could probably reduce it by about five hundred, that would probably be. Adequate to get the uh CO meters and new meters.
So reduce that chief, five hundred dollars less.
Right, we um.
Alright, and then uh radio batteries, seems like you just got a whole bunch of new pagers and. For the ARPA funds and got new radios in the last year. We need we need uh we need all that money for radio batteries already?
Well, we just got in a um. A shipment of batteries for the old pagers, plus the uh. The newer pagers, they take triple A batteries, and they they they're just ni-cats, they don't last as long as the um. The batteries that we had for the Minotaur um pager from Motorola, so we go through batteries a little bit more. Um and the batteries on the HC twelve fifty radios that the officers are still using and. Uh we're issuing out to fire police, we're issuing out to EVA, those batteries are still needing to be replaced. I'm not talking about the new ones for the A A P F radios that we just got on on that grid, or the uh that large purchase.
We have those spare batteries for the new radios anyways, they each uh A P F radios. Those are the ones that we have to, we have to get new ones to have some spare batteries, usually have zero.
Well, and then SCBA, SCBA supplies and fit testing. Three thousand dollars, I don't know, like this, that seemed like a big number for me.
They're getting old, we had, how many did we set up for repair? Four packs had to be repaired.
So the average.
That's a separate line item, you have you have seventy three hundred dollars for SCBA repairs. I'm looking at, you have a line item for SCBA supplies and fit testing. Um yeah, seven hundred dollars. SCBA, SCBA supplies and fit testing, you have a line item of three thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, I see that.
And and then down at the bottom, you have a line for SCBA testing and repairs of seventy three hundred dollars. I guess if you could explain those two lines and justify those numbers.
Well, the um SCBA uh supplies is for um. Batteries that need to be replaced throughout the year, it's for um, and then you have the fit test where we have um. The state come in and actually mask fit testing for each um member.
And they have to do N ninety five also, now that's a new.
So that's a cost increase of doing both um SCBA mask and for N ninety five masks. And so that's why that.
Cause I remember it being five hundred dollars when I was chief.
Oh, we actually talked, was it last year or year before, we talked about buying a machine ourselves between Bethel and Stony Hill and just doing the.
Yeah, I was almost thinking about trying to do that with Arpa puns, trying to eliminate this, but then it was gonna be the.
Yeah, I know, Bethel just moved to, they started using um.
Well, they're doing their physical.
They're doing their physicals and their fit testing and their their uh their hepa fit testing, all that. They're doing it through Griffin Hospital now, and I guess Griffin Hospital actually just bought the machine, so they they can they can come and do it.
So the hospital is doing their SCBAs?
Griffin Hospital is gonna do the the SCBA fit testing for Bethel next year, according to what Chief McCollum told me. Yeah.
So we probably mean in this this year, because they just did this last year with the physicals through Griffin Hospital.
Right, they they just did it, I don't know, six months ago or whatever. But yeah, they whoever they did had do the fit testing, they did it all at the same night, when the Griffin Hospital came in and did the uh. Spirometry testing for all the members and so they they bought the machine to do the spirometry testing and. They're gonna, I guess, I don't know, talk to Chief McCollum, the way he explained it to me is Griffin Hospital is gonna do the. Spirometry and and the fit testing for the N ninety fives and the SCBAs all together.
Yeah, where the guys come in Saturday and Monday to do. Us at Stony Hill and the state, which kinda works out good for multi departments, because if somebody in Bethel that doesn't get it. On that Monday or Saturday, they they can jump in and get it done, and so that's my o- only point behind that whole thing. And if somebody from Bethel comes up to Stony Hill, we're we're taking that cost.
Right, yeah, well, I just, I just seemed like a lot to me, then, I don't know, I guess, like I said, I'm probably too far removed, I remember the fantastic was. Five hundred dollars on the state just to come and do it in Bethel.
Oh, no, they've been preaching about that.
I'm sure they have, I guess, like I said, I'm probably pretty far. Um. I see, I guess the only recommendation I would really have is with with the. Severe increase in turnout gear, if somebody asked you how you, I think Bug asked you how you were set on two sets of gear for everybody. Maybe maybe we cut once one set just to reduce the cost a little bit. Cut cut one set this year from eight to seven, right, yeah, eight, I think.
Eight, yeah. The only problem with that is I know I have four people, I mean, maybe we have firewall class or maybe here. So that's five sets right there, which is new people coming in, and that's only their their one set, obviously, I'm not gonna get them too red out of. Gate, but that will that will only leave me with four sets. And I think we already, like we did four sets, we already. Cause we have to order them so far in advance, because their their turnaround time is so slow.
You haven't you haven't ordered any yet this year. So you have five sets coming out of this year's budget.
Yeah, that that's for the people that are in fire one, we still have Mr. Vino, I believe Mr. Hart. And there's a handful, other people that still, actually, Tony's gear is outdated, so his gear has.
Tony's outdated. He set you up for that, he set you up for that.
I understand, I understand where you're coming from, because we're we're all looking at it as a as a a budget item for the town of Bethel. But if, and I'm not speaking because I'm a member of Stony Hill, and I'm not speaking for Bethel. But if you if you're trying to bring in members, right, to, you know, bring up the ranks. And they go through all the training, and now they're certified interior firefighters. Well, by the standard, they have to have the two sets of gear, I mean, that's that's the standard, buddy, yeah. I don't like seeing the budgets increase either, but.
No, I I said, like I said before, my my biggest concern was a twenty nine percent increase over two years.
Right.
Is that seems pretty over the top. Only one person, so.
No, I'm not, I'm disagreeing with that.
See both, see both sides, you know?
See both, I see both sides of this.
I mean, I must fall out of my chair when I see the price of a pair of boots is six hundred dollars.
So what's a pair of boots cost? Yeah, no, I I I I know, I I looked some of these numbers up myself, and I was astonished.
And you know, now more than ever, they're really looking at gear not only for um. Condition of the gear, but does it actually fit, because you can't be able to work in that, you know, um environment. If you have things that are too big or too tight or too loose, so they pretty much don't like the hand-me-down aspect much anymore. It's gotta be size to you.
Alright, so is there a motion to fund the equipment and supplies account and two oh two account?
I'll make a motion to fund five two oh two, I second presented.
Well, what do you think about that, Richie?
Then we take five hundred.
You took five hundred dollars out of the um meters account, yes.
Right. So I withdraw my motion.
That's right.
Make a brand new motion. Can we fund the five two oh two minus the five hundred we took out?
Yeah.
Minus the five hundred. Seventy six, eight hundred.
Alright, so that was seconded by Rich? Alright, all those in favor? Opposed?
I just wanna hear Richie's, you know, his ideas on on what the costs are.
You know, everything is going on, but to the departments and your comment about you need the equipment for men.
And living.
And living, right. For the firefighters.
Right.
And and you know, I know years ago, we used to pass down equipment, Chief Baker just mentioned about, you know. Some some guy being in a in a tent or or so tight, he can't move in it. So, you know, the the things have changed from years ago, and we have to provide what we need for the fire departments.
And, you know, to that example, you know, I think it's great, I've got uh this uh. Female in the class that she has size five and a half feet, I have nothing in stock that's gonna be five and a half foot. I have that in the group, so. Send six hundred dollars and and buy Vanessa a new pair of boots.
Alright, so is everybody everybody good, I'll come up with a total number here.
Problem I come with the custom figures, once you get a bit, stomach changes a little bit, it's uh almost like a doggy pit anymore. Gotta be careful, you take kind of too close.
So if my math is correct, I come up with a a proposed, a totally proposed budget of one hundred ninety seven thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Somebody want to double check me?
That'd be a little less, because his pressure budget is one ninety eight seven two.
Right, I can, so I, so we 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 reduce the two oh two by five hundred.
Right.
We reduce the two oh eight by four fifty, and we reduce the three oh six by. Uh three fifty. For a total of thirteen hundred dollars in reductions.
So I'm just going back to the the last motion on the uh.
So I'm just going back to the the last motion on the five oh two account. If we stay with the bottom line, what's for that? We took five hundred out of the seventy-seven.
Yeah, seventy-six.
Seventy-six, eight.
One ninety-seven. So a motion to recommend to the board of selectmen to fund the Stony Hill Fire Department in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Will she carries? All right. Final item on our agenda is consideration of a proposed ex officio member represents Stony Hill five. I guess Rich has had a little more conversation with the selectmen regarding that.
In in the current ordinances, each department is has one ex officio member. So at at this time, I recommend to the commission that be appoint the one member currently for the Stony Hill Fire Department, which has been Chief Baker.
Do you make a motion to recommend to the board of selectmen Chief Baker for her appointment to the fire commission as the ex officio member? Is there a second on that motion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? So you get to sit up here at the stand for future. Because now you're.
Yeah, you should have been up here also.
All right.
So is there any additional discussion under budgets for the the cap? Or endorsing the one point six million, one of the.
Well, we we already forwarded a recommendation to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, both of them.
For the purchase ladder truck for both. And.
Yeah, there was a from the last year's recommendation or request. The prices gone up. That's why it's now one point six. And now we're saying that might be going to one point seven uh before the voting is completed.
Yeah, I mean, I I think we we forwarded our recommendation to require two ladder trucks without a number attached to it. So then, I don't know, kind of up to this point, up to the board of selectmen, board of finance, the come up with a number, I mean.
Yeah, and then there's that whole issue with the numbers considering the one for even the chief's needs.
Yeah, I mean, I.
That's another one.
Kind of.
Putting radios in it was fourteen thousand dollars for two radios.
Yeah, I don't I don't know why why the chief's vehicle is is stalled. I mean, it seems like that's been on the back burner for the better part of two years now.
Did we explicitly make that motion in our discussion earlier?
To.
Did we say, did we, the truck made it through in the first discussion?
Yeah, that's just it.
Yes.
Well, last night there wasn't a board of selectmen, correct?
Was it rescheduling? Pardon, was it rescheduling? It was a nice regular meeting. We had a special meeting to deal with some of this stuff earlier tonight. That was on.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks.